Good, how are you?
Good. So John, David, Heather, and then Brian's gonna be about twenty, thirty minutes late for he's got church deacon meeting, I believe. So, uh, so I believe we got everybody. So I'll open us up in, in, uh, invocation. So please pray with me. Dear Lord, we just thank you for all the many blessings you've given us, our town. We just praise you and thank you for that. Be with us tonight and give us the courage and the wisdom to do what's best for our town. And just be with us and we just thank you for all the blessings you give us. In Jesus Christ's name I pray. Amen. Alrighty. You all ready? I pledge allegiance and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Alright, thank y'all. Thank you, Mayor Aaron. Alright, I've called the meeting to order. So first up, we have public comments. So I think we had a couple of people that signed up. And did anybody sign up?
I don't have anyone who's notified me, but if I'm, if you'd like to give public comment, just unmute yourself and let Mayor Duno and he'll call on you accordingly.
Yeah, I thought somebody, Alex thought some people were gonna be here tonight, but I don't see them, so we'll, we'll move on. So we'll move on to the consent agenda. We've got three items there. The amended budget ordinance number five, the live scan grant, and the water sewer policy resolution. Does anybody have any comments or discussion on any of those three? Alright, we're hearing none. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Alright, motion by Ms. Paxton, second by Mr. Martin to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Alright, ayes have it on the consent agenda. Alright, next we'll move to the reports. I just got off the phone with Dean R. finally. So he was driving back to Raleigh today and so he said he will present the hotel tax again. He can get it through the House, he believes. You know, I can't remember when we did the resolution, but we need to do the resolution again. So I'll talk to Alex and Aaron about getting on the March twenty-second agenda. But he doesn't think it'll get passed the Senate. And Todd Johnston doesn't have enough pull in the Senate yet to get it through. I don't know why not, but you know, my whole argument is, you know, we're losing sixty to eighty thousand dollars of property tax revenue from the hospital and so we need somewhere to make that up rather than taxing our citizens. So, and then of course, I don't know, anybody get their revaluation today?
One of my neighbors did.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah, mine went up thirty-three percent. What is yours?
Forty-five percent. Forty-five.
Anybody else?
Uh, I haven't looked at my previous, so I'm not sure. Probably fifty to fifty to a hundred grand.
Yeah, mine went up.
I didn't see the previous number on that letter.
It went up thirty-three percent, but it went up ninety-four thousand dollars. So that's a thousand dollars a year.
Well, they'll be
I've already appealed and on their website, they say the amount of percentage increase is not a valid reason to appeal. And I called BS on that. I said, I'll appeal for any damn reason I want to appeal. And so I said, you'll see me at the council meeting and, you know, I just want them to be good stewards with the money. And I said, the other thing is I look forward to the severe tax decrease percentage wise of the rate when they go up, you know, thirty-three to forty-five percent. So it'll be interesting to see how responsible our county commissioners are with the rate, so.
I believe it's state law. I believe it's state law that it has to be revenue neutral.
Yeah, it's gotta be revenue initial, but they can go further than that. So that's what I want, I want, so. The other thing Dean talked about was, I asked him about voter fraud and it is on their agenda to address it. Of course, we have a Democrat governor. So who knows what it'll get through, but it is on the House agenda to, you know, it's not their highest priority right now, but he said they'll get it done before the election in twenty twenty-two. So that's all I got. So John, you got anything for us?
No, not this week.
David?
No.
Heather?
Nothing here.
Alright, Stephen?
Hey, just a quick report from Wuma, our Western Union Municipal Association. So they are planning to take and make a presentation during the March eleventh shindig out in Monroe with the county commissioners. So just kind of be aware of that there. The other thing is, is that last discussion at Wuma, we had a conversation around roads and DOT. So, you know, we are a, what is it, a Powellville town? As far as that's concerned, we're the only Powellville town in Wuma. All the rest of them are straight DOT, which means that DOT is responsible for all the roads in their, their entire town. So of course, they're having even more conversation around and concerns around DOT and the amount of work that they need to get out of them. So just as an awareness, they are gonna be inviting several members of the DOT to our next meeting just to kind of discuss some future options based on the fact that some of the timelines have slipped and some of the just basic maintenance to roads has slipped also in the county. So, uh, so that should be at the end of March. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Alright, thanks Stephen. Linda?
A lot of things. On the survey for the property that we're purchasing on Stallings Road was completed last week. I don't have a copy of it, but when I get that, I will provide that to the council. Our due diligence period for that property ends on Friday, March the twelfth. So any other inspections or investigation we would need to do, we should complete before Friday. But I think we've agreed that the survey was probably all that we planned to do. I don't think the seller has acquired another property yet, so we may get a request from him to allow him to maintain possession after closing for a short period of time. Closing is scheduled for April the thirtieth. So he does still have some time there. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention tonight is, um, I had asked some of council, well, I think I sent something out to everybody to see if there was any interest in the mobile home park that is technically in Stallings, in Indian Trail, but is totally surrounded by Stallings and is only accessed through Stallings. And I've spoken with a couple of the council members in Indian Trail to see if there would be any interest in possibly working with us on a trade of some property to give us control of that location and possibly allowing them to take some of the satellite properties with an equivalent tax base that surround, they surround, but the properties are in Stallings. And thus far, the people that I've spoken with have thought that was probably a good idea, worth investigating. But the Indian Trail Councilman felt like that we should start with having the managers discuss that. So anyway, I think it's something we probably should pursue because I think that's a critical piece for us with regard to developing something in our downtown strip there. And that's the end of my report.
Well, can you get with Alex and get him totally up to speed on that? And, uh, and he can report back to us on what he's gonna do, so.
I will.
Alright.
And I'm fully on board with that since that's on my back porch.
I forgot to bring up the, uh, there's a little bit of confusion going on in my mind. On the March eleventh meeting that we had with the Union County, are the county commissioners not gonna be there?
No, they're gonna be there.
Yeah, because Mark Walker reached out to me and was talking about, he wants to meet with us, me and some of the council members at the GOP meeting that night. So is it after our eight to four meeting? Is there a GOP convention that night? Does anybody know? Yeah, I'm not aware, I'm not aware.
I'm sorry, what night?
March eleventh.
Yeah, there is, there is.
So after the, the meeting from eight to four, there's a GOP?
Yeah, the county convention is that evening.
At the same place or where is it at, David?
Uh, I believe it is the same place, yeah.
Oh, okay. So, well, Mark Walker will be there. If anybody wants to reach out to Meredith, you know, that was on our, on our parking rec staff or is, you know, on his campaign. So you can reach out to her. And if you don't have her address, I'll send it to everybody here after the, after the meeting. Alright, and then I told Alex, I know we got the list of everybody that's gone, but I won't get there till nine, nine-thirty, had appointment come up. So, but I'll be there in time for our presentation, no problem. Alrighty, uh, next up, Alex, what do you have for us tonight?
Great, thank you, Mayor. I've got two items. I'd ask a couple of our teammates to share with us. And then I've got about four or five issues I want to run down with y'all, so. First one, Mayor, I'd like our planning tech, Mr. Matthew West, to show us the new current developments projects map. So Matthew, can I turn it over to you, sir?
Thanks, Alex. Do I have screen sharing capability? Can, can everyone see my screen?
We got it.
Okay. So I have spent some time developing a web map to replace the table on the current developments page. It replaces it so it's in the same place. If you don't know, it's just a little button right here to go straight to the current development projects. I believe there's also a link if you go through the planning department page, but this is the fastest way to do it. On this page, you can see there's the map, but I've included some instructions at the top. Essentially, all you have to do is click on the colored polygons. You can zoom in and out with your scroll wheel or just with the plus and minus. If you ever get lost, you know, if you fly over here, you can press the home and that'll bring you back to this. The two tabs to make you aware of is on the left here, there is the legend. It's pretty simple, so once you've seen it once, you probably don't need to reference it again. But the more important tab is this info tab here on the left. And so what happens when you click on a project? It'll bring up all the info about the project on the left here. For the rest of the project, I also want to mention that there's a full screen version of the map. This view right here is kind of locked to this size, so it might be difficult to see. You know, it's a little bit small on my screen, but if you try to use this on your phone, for example, it's gonna be a little bit too big. So if you click the full screen version, it's the exact same map. It's just much larger and easier to see. So the information included on these tabs, I'll click on one. It automatically opens the info tab if you have the legend open. You can see at the top, it has the name of the project, a short project description, the status, and then the four meetings that each project has to go through, and then finally attachments. So again, this, this is, this map is basically replacing the table and it'll be kept updated by me as more projects are added, as dates change. I think the last thing to note is that these don't have to stay as dates. So for example, on the Stinson Farm project, they had requested an referral for their town council meeting. So I had included that information there. And I think that's pretty much it. Again, when you click the attachments, it opens in a new tab. And then on the upper left here, you can save out the attachment from that. And that's, that's all I had for it. It's a really simple map. If there's any comments, everything about this can be changed pretty much if you don't like the colors or if you'd like the Stallings boundary to stand out a little bit more, I can, I can make all of those kind of adjustments. This is kind of just a first pass at the, at the map. And it is, it is live currently. So if you go to the current development projects page, you will see this as, as I presented it.
Alright, great. Any questions or comments for Matthew? Any feedback?
Thanks.
This has been pretty good.
Yep.
And this is built on top of Google Maps or?
It's using ArcGIS. There's ArcGIS online. There is this search function here that I didn't mention. This is not using Google's addresses. It's using ArcGIS's. So one thing I checked right before this is, this is, this is the Southstone subdivision. There are more houses built here than what is shown on this map. So if you tried to search for some Southstone address, it probably wouldn't be able to find it. But if I did something like Stallings Road, then it would bring up the town hall. And then you can see what, what developments, there's no development projects around it, but you, that's what the purpose of it would be.
Alex, can we maybe, you know, do a social media blitz on that? Because that's a feature a lot of folks will be interested in.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. We wanted to just kind of first and get any initial feedback. And I think that's a thing that we can share with the public and really credit to Matthew with one support kind of getting this together. So great job by them.
Agreed. Thank you.
Matthew, where is it on the homepage, the link to get to this page?
It's just above the events and meetings under current development projects. The map takes a little bit to load. It's a little bit slow, but.
Thanks, Matthew. Again, great job. And I want to turn it over to our Parks and Rec Director, Ms. Ashley Platts.
Hello, everyone. I'm here tonight to just give you an update. At our council retreat, we talked about the farmer's market and some of the feedback I received from you was could we move that date up sooner than the June thirtieth date that we presented to you as our goal? And here to let you know that we've been working with the county to ensure that we have a Saturday date for the farmer's market. And while we're still finalizing our plans, it looks like we will run the market sometime between mid to late May through September. And it will be each Saturday at Stallings Park. We're still working through the logistics and the layout. So those final documentation items will be coming to you by the end of the month. Alex and our team will be reviewing the agreement from the county in the next week or so to get that finalized. And furthermore, just to let you know, that's gonna be our priority for the Parks and Rec Department to concentrate on through the late spring and through the summer. And in the meantime, we'll be working toward a plan of what will our events look like throughout the fall and the winter. Got some great feedback from you guys about Christmas and Stallings Fest at the council retreat. And we've had a lot of, you know, people reaching out to us from our vendors to let us know what they've changed as far as the protocol for COVID engagement, including our amusement companies and our bounce house companies. And we've been looking at documentation that's come from people as big as Disney and then of course, the state level event planners and then, you know, DHHS and the county level Health and Human Services. So one of the things I wanted to queue you into to just kind of get your mind thinking and invite feedback is we're looking towards our events in the fall and winter instead of being singular, one-time, large, high-volume events to be more of almost a series of smaller events that take place either over a week or a couple of weeks to reduce the number of people who are onsite at one particular time. Since we do have a small staff and we can't completely go forward with all of the recommended guidelines for COVID protocol, those are things that we're exploring. Of course, we're still months out and everything's changing with the immunizations coming out. But I just wanted to let you know, we're putting in the due diligence. We're working with the league on some liability issues. And there's our risk management component from the insurance side for these larger events that we're exploring and will be bringing back to you in the future. But we do see, you know, a little bit of a light at the, at the end of the tunnel as far as how we can gear back up to engage in the community. Of course, we've ramped up our programming and that will continue. And then we'll be bringing the farmer's market online and exploring how we can expand that in the park every weekend throughout the summer and see where that will lead us for the fall and winter. Thank you.
Thanks, Ashley. And real quick, couple of things I wanted to mention to the board. Of course, thank you for everybody for spending their Saturday with us as part of the annual retreat. We'll be kind of talking more about that at our second meeting in March as far as follow-up and any feedback you might have. Next, wanted to kind of segue off the conversation that we had right before the meeting regarding property tax evaluation notices. They begin mailing them, I believe, on the fifth, which was last Friday. And you may be getting questions about them. If not, you probably will be. So I wanted to give y'all some quick info. People ask you about them. So if folks disagree with their valuation, you know, the first thing they should do is contact the county's appraisal office for, I believe what they called an informal review. And then after that, if, if the individual is still not satisfied with the property tax value, they can file a informal, or excuse me, a formal appeal. And then there's a process where that goes through the board of equalization and review. And there's a lot of information up on the, on the county's website about it. But if y'all get any questions or wondering, because you likely will, I've already got it in several myself. That's some good information for people to realize. As the mayor indicated earlier, they disagree with their property value, how to appeal to them. So the, the next thing I wanted to bring up is Yes, yes, sir.
And one of the things that I'm running into is that it seems like, and I'll be even, I've even been guilty of this, is that with the value going up, people automatically assume that there is going, they're being charged more. So my understanding is that they have to reduce the rate to still be net zero, right? Or nearly net zero, right?
Great question. So the, this is something we've, I've stressed with a couple of people already. The property valuation, it's not a tax bill, right? It's just one part of how people are charged for taxes. So the other thing is that tax rate. And so state law says that once that new property taxes that the board at issue, whether it's the county commissioners or the town council or both in this case, they can set the rate just like any other time at whatever they, whatever they choose. However, the particular government issue setting the rate has to also post the revenue neutral tax rate as a whole for the jurisdiction. So whether it's the county commissioners and the town council, both or either or, you still have the authority to set the tax rate at what are, whatever the board deems appropriate. But you must also publicize what the revenue tax rate would be.
Okay, thanks for that clarity, because
Sure.
Sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. Glad, glad to answer. Thank you. So moving along here, so the NC DOT is seeking to reengage the town on the Old Monroe Road project. You recall that last year they engaged us and we decided we would meet at a future date. Well, the DOT has taken the, the quadrant road design for that intersection of Stallings Road, Old Monroe High Road and largely designed it to the town's wishes. And the councils already approved it. Generally, they'd like to come back and get final approval from the council so that they can begin right away acquisition for that intersection. And they're hopeful to come before the board in April to talk further about it. I think they've got a, in addition to the rendering, a traffic simulation to show how it will work, to show the board. And I wanted to see if, if the council was comfortable with DOT coming at either of the April meetings. I'll suggest the second one in April.
Absolutely.
Okay, if there's no opposition, I'll assume that that is okay for the second needle, meeting in April for DOT.
Yeah, we just need to get the, the, the maps and everything, you know, way before, a couple of days before the meeting.
We'll try to get them way ahead of time. Alright, thanks for that feedback, Mayor. And then the next thing, the light rail final public input.
Hear me?
Yes, sir. Can hear you. You're great. I think the mayor's kind of frozen there. Everybody else hear me?
I can hear you, Alex.
I'm gonna keep on moving and hopeful, hopefully the mayor will log back on. He and I have talked about all these items already.
He looks good this way though, doesn't he?
Not touching that one.
Be careful there.
So the final light rail public input meeting was held last week and had a lot of good questions. And so CAT staff are gonna be presenting their preliminary staff recommendation to the MTC on March the twenty-fourth. And so town staff are planning to take the resolution from our previous conversations with them and also the council, circle back around and on the twenty-second of March, bring a resolution for the council just to look at or review, to consider, to think about. And then on the first meeting in April, CATs will be there to answer questions. And, and that could potentially be a vote to approve that. That's what CATs needs from us, just a resolution of concurrence there, so. Alright, any questions on that one? If not, I'll keep moving. Okay. The Idaho Wild Road Widening Project U four nine one four, I believe it is. The town and DOT have been discussing this and having a dialogue for over three years now, I think at this point, and aren't able to agree on a design. And so the last time we really formally talked about it with the board, the board directed myself and Mayor Pro Tim Paxton to engage with the, our COPO leadership delegation and really kind of verify what our options are. And when we've done that, we've had a good conversation with them. One potential option as far as taking the approach of how Matthews did with the Old Monroe or in their case, John Street project, where they had an alternative study done. That's an option that was, was brought up. Myself and Ms. Paxton are going to engage with DOT because from a timing perspective, we would likely need their buy-in to do that. So we're meeting with them later in March and once we have that conversation, we'll circle back around and engage with the council. Mayor Pro Tim Paxton, is there anything I left out or misspoke on?
Um, I don't think so, other than it would involve probably hiring a consultant. And one of the benefits of doing that is that we could have, possibly have greater competence in the traffic counts that were generated. And the risk, and we did talk about that, is that it may be that this study would just confirm what DOT wants to do. And we'll have to deal with that, I guess, if, as the time comes.
Yeah, all very points. Thank you, ma'am. Alright, if there are no other questions or concerns with that one, I'll
I got a question for you. You always, I always have a question. Don't you know that? So, so, so obviously, we've got the Stinson Farm project. So how does that fit into the overall widening scenario there? I mean, and just a couple of sentences.
Yeah, what a great question. And I'm gonna give you the lawyer answer. First of all, it depends. So if and when the Stinson Farms project is approved, part of the infrastructure work that's identified in the TIA, which would be the mitigation, one of the mitigation efforts that would be needed is to expand out the number of lanes on Old Monroe, or excuse me, on Idaho Wild Road between four eighty-five and Stevens Mill Road. Very similarly, do I think, what the town council would like to see in that stretch. The challenge is there most likely would not be significant upgrades to the intersection of of Stevens Mill Road and Idaho Wild Road. And so if you did that, just that section, it could cause some serious traffic jam issues at Stevens Mill and Idaho Wild Road. Now, at the same time, from DOT's perspective, because we've asked them this, and I think it's a really good question, Stephen. If that's built, will that deter DOT at all, score lower from from proceeding with what they would like to do? And the answer we got from our colleagues at DOT was no, it would not.
Okay. All right.
Good question. Thank you. Any other thoughts or questions on that one? All right, and the final thing I wanted to bring up, and thank you for Councilmen Ayers for helping us rattle some cages over there, for lack of a better word, was we've, we've received communication from DOT that they're willing to allow the Town of Stallings to proceed with requested construction authorization. Once NC DOT gives final approval on the engineer's construction estimate and contract proposal, which is generally the plans we submitted. So as well as getting a form back that apparently it's got to be renewed once a year, and it's been over a year since we submitted it. So depending on how the feedback goes, we get from DOT, we're hopeful that that work will will be ready to get started in the near future. And when we are, we'll bring back the issue to the board and request permission to let the project and go out a bit.
Talking about pleasant plains and potters now, right?
Yes, if I, if I misspoke, I apologize.
So Alex, this is Brad. I joined the meeting late. Glad to be here. Forgive me. What is the step, the signatures required from someone for what now?
Sure, and welcome, Councilman Richardson. So there were three things. The first two essentially combined to be the plans that we have submitted here too. So like any regulatory process, you submit plans and you wait for feedback. And they could say everything's good, or they could say, no, you need to fix X, Y, and Z. So it'd be a matter of just getting the final plans to DOT's approval. And the other form is a CE form, I believe it's called. And our engineers at Kimley-Horm confirmed today that we think we should have that by the end of the week. So once we get all those, DOT has indicated that they will give us permission to request authorization to construct. So when that happens, we will bring that issue back to the board and ask for permission to let it, to bid this project down.
Still, still funded, Alex, with the money locally to be reimbursed later, right?
Yes, yes, from a general perspective, from what it was estimated to be. If the bids come out, come back higher than what it was estimated to be, then we may have to revisit the conversation and say, all right, to make this project move forward, is the town willing to put in more money? But generally, yes, sir.
Okay.
And is DOT not for that now that they would be able to reimburse us in a timely way? Because I think that was one of the concerns that was raised a few months ago, when we knew they were having so many funding issues. They had said they couldn't guarantee when they would be able to reimburse us. So has that abated? Are we okay with that now?
I believe so, yes, ma'am. But that's a question that I'll make sure we get in writing before we, we bid it out and enter into a contract.
Yeah, and my thought on those is why do any work on Idaho Wild Road until we finished three P? You know, that's, you know, it just doesn't make any sense to me why they would do so many projects when they're limited on funds. So if y'all could ask them that question, can we divert funds from Idaho Wild Road? Whatever time and effort they're gonna put on that, put it over on three P and get this thing going and finished.
Mayor, great question. We've actually asked that to them. And my understanding is that the reason they can't do that is because it's defined in the state's step plan. And so we wouldn't be allowed to move money from that one project into the other. That's my understanding. But I'd like to ask our town engineer, Mr. Eastrally, is that your understanding as well?
Yes, sir. A certain set of money has been allocated for that project, and it can be reallocated to it in the other project.
Great. Thank you, sir.
And then who would we go to to get that amended or changed?
I would suspect it would probably be, Carbo would have to approve that. Ms. Paxton, would that be the case?
It would, but I, I think, I'm not sure Carbo could do that either, because there's, there are a lot of steps to getting a project approved. And I know it has come up more than once about trying to shift money from one project to another, and it just is not something that can be done, certainly not easily.
Yeah, common sense is after we finish one project before you start another one, that's seems to be not, not something DOT likes to do. All righty, thank you, Alex.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
A lot of good work. Appreciate it. All right, any of the, any of your town managers have anything? Dennis, Chief Franks, or anybody else that's on the, on the call?
No, sir, I don't have anything tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you, chief. Right, we'll move on to the agenda approval. Does anybody have any additions or changes they want to make? All right, can I get a motion to approve the agenda as submitted to us?
Can't get to my button fast enough.
All right, we got a motion by Ms. Paxton, second by Mr. Richardson. All in favor, please say aye.
Can I ask a question before we move? I couldn't hit my unmute button fast enough, and I hit the wrong spot anyhow. I would like to know, and it's maybe tonight, maybe another night, but when, when might we, might start looking for a live meetings again? I think we put it off month to month. Do we have a next date where we're gonna discuss this?
Well, I asked Alex to do some, you know, digging on that. You know, I know John was not comfortable doing, and if somebody's uncomfortable, that's, that's fine. We don't need. But then, if, let's say we have, you know, the rest of us want to meet in person. So can we, you know, obviously, the Board of Education did remote meetings at one time, and so somebody.
But they're back to live now, and they don't, they're not sitting next to each other. They're well distanced. So I'm thinking, heck, if they're doing it, it's possible to do this safely with a mask and social distance and.
I've asked Alex to look into that and then see if we can, if somebody doesn't want to attend and they want to attend through Zoom, how do we make it happen? So.
That's good, then. I'm fine with agenda.
All right. All right, so a motion by Ms. Paxton, second by Mr. Richardson. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, let's have it. All right.
By the way.
Oh, did we?
Yeah, I think he texted says internet went down, so hopefully it'll be back soon.
Well, mine's been dropping too, so you've got a little semi, that's what's happening. I got it. I just bought a range extender, and I don't know if it's working or not. All righty, let's see. Let's give him a minute. I don't see him yet.
I can ask questions on his behalf.
That's big shoes to fill there, Heather.
I'll try my best.
All righty. Come on, Stephen. All right.
While we're waiting, I did get an alert today that the governor has changed some of the restrictions and said that, actually, I guess it's the CDC, that once people are vaccinated, there's less requirement for masking. I think it still would apply probably to us meeting in person. But it's now okay, or they think it's safe for people to not wear masks in a lot of situations where they were before, if they've been vaccinated.
Right, well, we're getting there.
Yeah.
Alex, let's go ahead. Stephen will jump in here. Then we got these two number.
He's back on, Mayor. I'll brief him later on the assignment we gave him.
All right, yeah, he's on now. So tell, go and tell him later. All right, with the real estate properties, Alex, turn it over to you. We'll, we'll take A, Stallings Road. I'll open the public hearing.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. And Aaron, would you, would it be possible to bring up the, the agenda, please? Right. Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, so this is the public hearing on three twenty-five Stallings Road.
Yes, sir, thank you. So this is the property currently owned by Mr. Flo that the town has put in an offer and you recall that the town has previously purchased the property beside it. And originally, for the middle parcel, we knew we wanted to use it. But the specific reason, we had several options, wasn't defined yet. There were a number of options available. However, as the town has gotten three twenty-five Stallings Road under contract with the ability to combine two contiguous parcels, it, it's enhanced the opportunity and options available to the town for economic development purposes in addition to just your typical governmental operation uses. So before we, after talking with legal, it was important that we, we highlighted that and held a public hearing for both of these properties due to the potential economic development use of these properties, especially as it relates to creating a downtown. And at the same time, we, we have gone forward and done some of the due diligence. There's still one outstanding item, the surveys, as Mayor Pro Tim Paxton. But really, what, what we're looking for now is just, once the public hearing is, is over, for three twenty-five Stallings Road to authorize the town manager to execute the closing docs and approve it a budget. And really to do something similar for three twenty-nine Stallings Road as far as a resolution to, to move forward. So Ms. Cox, I want to make sure that I'm, I'm doing everything, anything I missed that, that I need to there, ma'am?
Yes, sir, you touched on everything.
Great, thank you, ma'am. So with the council's approval, we'd like to kind of move forward with these, with these items. So.
Can you go through the budget amendment real quick, Alex?
Sure, sure. Aaron, Ms. Nichols, do you mind pulling that up on the screen so we might be able to look at it together? I think that's it. So, thank you, ma'am. So that's three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I believe, for the actual purchase of the property itself, as well as two thousand and six hundred dollars for the due diligence and closing items that the board had identified as a need during the, the previous conversations.
All righty, any questions for Alex, or I don't know if Marsh is on or not, but we've discussed.
I am here.
All right, thank you, Marshall. Any questions for Alex or Marshall on this? All right, hearing done. Can I get a motion for somebody to authorize the town manager to execute?
Um, can you see if there's anyone in the audience that wants comments in the public hearing?
That's right. I'm sorry. Yep, is anybody in the audience, if they would like to speak? Speak up, and then we'll. I know we have a few people.
Mayor, I don't want to speak, but I don't think we can vote on this motion tonight.
Oh, that's right.
Because it is a hearing.
All righty. No, I don't hear any, nobody from public.
No, I was just gonna say, because you're, you're not adopting in, in ordinance, you're just authorizing the manager to go through with an action. I mean, if you have, I don't know what the timeframe is. Did you say the close is not to April thirtieth? Okay, then you have plenty of time to do it at the next meeting. Okay, I thought there might have been more of a time crunch.
Well, Melanie, if we can do it tonight, let's just clean it up and get it done, get it over with if we are allowed to.
I think you can. The, as long as Ms. Nichols, if she gets any comments in the next twenty-four hours, and she sends them all to you, then I believe we're still in, complying with the statute.
All right, and let's clean, let's clean it up is my recommendation. So can I get somebody to authorize the town manager?
The public hearing first, though. I'm sorry.
Okay, I'll close that public hearing for three twenty-five Stallings Road. So somebody authorized the town manager to execute the closing docs and approve budget amendment number seven.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Shaw.
I'll second.
Second to my Mr. Ayers. Aaron, could you do a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. District one, Martin.
Aye.
District two, Shaw.
Aye.
District three, Paxton.
Aye.
District four, Grimes.
Aye.
District five, Ayers.
Aye.
District six, Richardson.
Aye.
All right, motion passes unanimously. All right, thank you. Next up is B, four B, three twenty-nine Stallings Road. I'll open up the public hearing. And Alex, you want to take it from there about the resolution?
Sure, sure. So again, just to reiterate it, since we've got potentially two contiguous parcels now, it's enhanced the opportunity available to the town for economic development purchases in addition to typical governmental uses. And so we want to make sure we're complying with, with all the laws that are out there with being transparent about a potential use there. So this is again for, have a public hearing to potentially use the property for economic development purposes.
All right, any questions for Alex? Or any of the staff or Melanie?
No, I just saw a typo, though. This is my fault. The fourth, whereas it should be the parcels located at three twenty-nine Stallings Road and three twenty-five Stallings Road are contiguous.
All righty, well, I'm sure y'all will make that change. Any other questions, comments? I can barely read it. I don't know if anybody wants to read it, or we'll just adopt it as a resolution changing the intended use of parcel zero seven one two six zero one zero. Does anybody want to read it into the record? Are y'all okay with just adopting it as is? All right, I'll close the public hearing. And can I get a motion on somebody to approve the resolution changing the intended use of parcel zero seven one two six zero one zero?
So moved.
It was Mr. Richardson?
That was Mr. Ayers, Mr. Richardson, I'll second.
All right, motion by Mr. Ayers, second by Mr. Richardson. Aaron, could you do a roll call, please?
District one, Martin.
Aye.
District two, Shaw. District two, Shaw.
Aye.
District three, Paxton.
Aye.
District four, Grimes.
Aye.
District five, Ayers.
Aye.
District six, Richardson.
Aye.
All right, resolution passes unanimously. Thank y'all. All right, next up is text amendment twenty-one dot oh one dot oh one with Bob Richards. So we tabled it from two twenty-two. So we'll turn it over to Lynn. we'll turn it over to Lynn.
Lynn, it's Alex. If, if you're talking, uh, I think you're on mute.
Can you hear me now?
You're now.
Okay, sorry about that. I used my phone. So when I unmute it on my phone, I just assume it's unmuted on the screen. Um, anyway, this, I was saying that this is a public hearing that we opened on February twenty-second for a text amendment. Um, that would allow the applicant um, to include the uses of a sports academy, dance school, gymnastics, and cheerleading academies, and personal training facilities as permitted uses in the industrial district. Um, council tabled this request at the last meeting, and they asked staff to come back with um, additional information. But information, and they were seeking to know what the zoning of Union West Business Park was. Um, what the businesses that were currently located in that park, what they were. And to consult with our attorney, our landy's attorney, as to what the options may be um, other than a text amendment for this request. Um, so I've included a copy of the zoning map for the Union West Business Park. What this shows um, is the zoning of the park itself is, in purple here, is zoned industrial. The properties that front Highway seventy-four, the bypass, are zone C seventy-four. These properties in this area, some of them are platted as part of that business park. They were given a different zoning designation because of the fact that they were fronting on this frontage road. And then there's three parcels located in the park that are not in the town limits, but they are in Union County. They are zoned light industrial in Union County. Um, I looked on the county's website to see what light industrial would allow. Um, there are uses permitted within, within the light industrial district. Um, there is a use called personal improvement services. I'm assuming this includes things like personal training gyms, CrossFit gyms, uh, sports and recreation uses, both indoor and outdoor, were allowed in industrial. And then it said schools. Um, they did not have listings for things like dance schools, so I would assume um, that this category of schools would encompass those types of uses as well. Um, our coenforcement officer, Colleen Dickinson, went out and did a survey of the park. She looked at what the businesses were by street name. I included a copy of that report in your packet, so you do have that list. But just to kind of break it down, there are twenty-one businesses that are currently located in that park. Um, Colleen estimated the vacancy rate there is around thirty percent. But there are sports-related uses. There are two specifically, the Mission Baseball Academy, and there's also a gymnastics center on Richard Baker Drive. There's also a football field um, that was actually approved as a conditional zoning by the town many years ago. Um, that's located in there also. Um, that's a, a business owner in that park uses some of his land for that practice field. And then there's also one retail use, Proven Parts Warehouse is technically a retail auto parts center. Um, like I said, and the complete use listed those businesses by addresses included in your packet. Um, staff did speak with Matt McCarley as to what the best option would be. Um, after a conversation about whether or not these could be special uses designated as special uses. Um, it was decided the text amendment is the best and cleanest way to handle this. Um, especially use, those are quasi judicial hearings. Mr. McCarley said that he would not recommend council hearing those, but they should go before the Board of Adjustments. Uh, which means that board would be hearing use approvals. Um, we have really gotten away from council doing quasi judicial hearings and gone to the conditional zoning process. It's difficult to rezone um, a, a particular unit within a building, which is what would be happening a lot of times in Union West if we did not handle this as a text amendment. So it was his recommendation to continue with this request as a text amendment. Um, that is all the information um, that staff has gathered, and hopefully will help council with making um, their decision this evening. Um, the applicant is here as well, and can address any questions you may have.
Alrighty, and uh, who's the applicant? Isaac?
Um, yes, sir.
Hi, hi, Mayor Dunn. I'm actually the um, the applicant's actually a client of mine.
Right.
So I'm not the client himself, but I'm here on his behalf. Yes, sir.
Alright, well, you uh, you, you want to go read the highlights of your email that you sent us?
Sure. Yes, sir. Thank you. Um, well, after the, the last meeting, I, I, I wanted to spend just a little time in the park to get a feel for some of the questions that the council members had asked and, you know, and it seems like Ms. Hare and the staff did a excellent job. So took a little bit of the um, responsibility off myself, I guess, but um, a few things that I, you know, outside of the uses that she's included in a packet, and some of the things that she said, just the, the pedestrian activity that I noted in there. Um, in a very short period of time, like I mentioned in that email. There was a mother pushing a baby stroller, and then there was a gentleman walking two dogs, both in casual clothing. Um, I'm assuming had come from the neighborhood that, that access is on the backside of um, Union West Business Park. And, and one of my, our tenants in there noted to me that he sees school buses on a regular basis cutting through the park to get to that neighborhood, and I've also seen them as well. Um, you know, then again, the mix of uses being a lot of service and goods um, locally rather than large industrial and manufacturing centers that could, you know, possibly, you know, make it unsafe for, for people of these sport-related users coming and going. Um, you know, and other, I mean, Ms. Hare hit, hit the nail on the head. I, I, I don't have a ton to add. Um, it, it may help to explain a little bit of the history on this particular property and Bob Richards' property. Last April, we were given a notice that his, a tenant that occupied a lot of his space um, was, would, would not be renewing their lease. So we were faced with thirty-two thousand plus square foot to um, to fill. And from a period of time from April until January, we were able to obtain four tenants. Um, first one being in September. And just make note that two of those tenants were sport-related users. The Dance Academy came in the fall, um, late fall. And Mission Baseball came, I believe it was August, September range. So, you know, I, I make that point to show that the two of the four new tenants were sport-related users. A lot of the interest we got were from sport-related users. I'm not saying this to say that we need to fill up business parks with sport uses, but you know, I don't have the, if you ask me, would someone else have leased it? I would have hoped so, um, given time. But those were the tenants that came to us and requested to um, lease in, in these facilities. So um, I mean, I'd be more than happy to ask any questions, you know, specifically to that email. I just wanted to put some of my thoughts in writing to, to share and distribute, just, you know, um, let you guys know a little bit where we were coming from and the, the owner's perspective and um, you know.
Alright.
The, the baseball tenant's been a great tenant for the owner. Um, good people, good paying tenants, excellent use of the facility, because it's just a pure warehouse, um, no office. And um, they're, they're getting good use out of the, the location. So I'd be glad to answer or um, you know, dig deeper into any of that if you'd like.
Right, thank you, Isaac. Uh, council, any questions for Lynn or for Isaac?
Sure, I'll.
Off.
Or comments?
So, so Isaac, I'm a little confused. I mean, of a couple of things, and I just want to, to ask this question. I mean, we've heard that uh, from, from your, your own boss's mouth, uh, that there is a lack of business real estate within this area. And I guess, based on what I'm hearing you say tonight, that, you know, you're getting more sports-related inquiries into this property. Can you kind of help? I mean, I think you're, I think Moser is about to build another bus, business park, right? Can you help me understand the, kind of what appears to me to be some discrepancy between those two statements? Because for me, it's not necessarily specific to this event and this particular uh, piece. I mean, this text amendment impacts the entire uh, ordinance. So that's what I'm trying to understand here, is that on one hand, we get, we, we're kind of getting this message that there's not enough business space or office spaces. And, and on the other hand, it seems like we're being told that that's not really the type of clientele that's looking for space at the moment.
I um, well, thank you. Um, you know, a lot of people, I, I do work closely with Dennis. A lot of people misunderstand my role in the company. Probably ninety-eight percent of what I do is, is uh, third-party brokerage. I do not work for Dennis much. I'm not involved in any of his developments, very little. If so, um, sometimes I broker the deal for him. So um, I'm not always up to speed and know everything he's in, every communication he's going through. I would have to believe that a lot of the product he is talking about is small flex space. Um, I've got some, some properties in that two thousand square foot range, multi-units, forty thousand square feet. For instance, an Indian Trail that there's a huge demand for. You know, the warehouses would probably be a little different, and I don't know, or I'm, I'm assuming you're talking about, is it the, when you mentioned the product he's building, is that the um, Radiator Drive project in Indian Trail?
Yeah, I don't know it by that name. I just know.
There's one on, the one on the, over there, yeah.
Okay.
I do know they're gonna have a mixture of product there. Um, I do think they're going to have some larger um, warehouses for industrial users. They're also gonna have a very, a, a lot of, a mix of, um, they're calling them their um, entrepreneur um, incubation sites. I think that's fancy terms for their small flex units, office warehouse. You know, fifteen hundred, two thousand square foot mini units. So I know they're going to have a mix in that, um, in that park. But um, I guess to go back to a, a comment I tried to make, I, I don't think the goal here would be to flood the market or that sport users are the only people out there looking for product. I, I, I definitely don't believe that. Um, it's just what we have been receiving from my clients, in, in particular, Union West, some in Indian Trail Business Park, and um, Sardis Church Road Business Park. And they've been the, the physical fitness, the um, or personal training and baseball and some of the others we've talked about. Does that, does that, um, you know, is that kind of in line with what you're asking, sir?
Sort of. So, so how big are these units over there that we're looking at? Because I mean, it looks like this building specifically is broken up into different small, with front faces with truckload, truck docks in the back. So I mean,
Correct.
It looks like what, what are they, like, thousand square feet, fifteen hundred square feet?
These are actually larger. These um, in that front building there at one thirty-five Copitoque, you have two seven thousand square foot warehouses. The unit on the right has a little bit of office. The building in the rear is a thirty-two thousand four hundred square foot building. You have minimal office in the far left, and the rest is pure warehouse. Um, there is a tenant, um, the mix of tenants there are unit sizes are sixteen thousand two hundred. And then you have an eighty-one hundred square foot unit, and then you have another eighty-one hundred square foot unit where Mission Baseball is. The Dance Academy um, had leased the set, one of the seven thousand square foot units in the front.
I got a couple of questions when you're done, Stephen.
Yeah, I was just, uh, I mean, it looks like that building is, is set up so that you could further subdivide it. And that, and that.
Yes, sir, both of.
That would be my last question.
I'm sorry, didn't mean to, I'm sorry, I did not mean to talk over the, the lag is, is a little bit. Um, you are absolutely correct. The, those buildings are designed um, originally to be, I, I, I don't know the smallest size we could get in there, because we've never had the need to do it. Because once the owner built them the way he did and got his first initial tenants in, he's just kept it the same and modified very little over the years. But they were originally built to be, if you look in that truck court, you know, into, you know, smaller units with doc, each dock door could possibly be a unit if he one day decided to go that route. Um, I believe they're all metered separately as well. So um, you, you are correct.
Okay, I, I wanted to understand that. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen, David.
Thank you.
Isaac, um, are there, how many office parks in the county have better access to transportation to the bypass and to the forty-five than, than this one?
How many have access, or is that?
Easy, easy access to forty-five, the bypass, seventy-four is this one.
Um, you know, four eighty-five Union West is obviously the closest. Um, you have Old Hickory probably coming in next. Um, whi, which has easy access to the bypass as well.
Alright.
Um, then you have the Indian Trail Business Park, which is behind the post office, that, you know, very similar to Old Hickory. You have Sardis Church Road Business Park that is a little further down seventy-four, however, still has pretty good access to the bypass.
But would you, would you agree that none of them have as good access and easy as access as this one?
Um, I, I'd have to agree that that's, that would be correct.
Then why would we want to farm this out to these other uses and not concentrate harder on finding the kinds of companies that would love to have that kind of access with the kind of space that we've got here?
I think that's an excellent question. You know, in the brokerage world, we, and the owners, you know, typically don't you know, pick and choose, you know, if they come through and they're vetted out. And they become, you know, they present themselves and they want to move in and sign a lease. They don't typically choose. Um, you know, it's just, you know, we have to kind of follow the market. And lately, for whatever reason, whether it be this specific location or across the board, I don't lease everywhere. But you know, those have been the users that have expressed a lot of interest. I do know for, you know, I think that access also works in their benefit as well. Um, you know, because a lot of these players come into Stalling. A lot would be local, local. Then the access into Union West is very, you know, very convenient for anybody coming around the four eighty-five loop. So it's actually positioned well for both.
So here's the, here's a prime area that's already zoned industrial. The intent is for highest and best use of proper, of businesses to be located in the appropriate places. And here we have a spot in Stallings where we want this kind of business to be located. We don't want it up in the residential area. We don't want it near the school. We want it in a spot like this. Not only do they, or in, they would be in the right spot, but they would have the access, and they would be seg, separated from the rest of the community, and yet an integral part of our community. So can you give me a ballpark what tax revenue per acre a place like the bike, baseball, uh, or the dance studio might bring in versus a uh, fully operational commercial property?
Being honest, I, I do, I'm not prepared to answer a question like that, or don't have, you know, data to, to throw out accurate information to you based on that.
I'm kind of guessing that a commercial property with thousands and thousands of dollars worth of property uh, machinery and, and inventory would probably bring in an awful lot more than a dance studio with a couple thousand dollars worth of equipment. That's just, to me, it just seems ludicrous that we would dilute the limited properties, parcels that we have available in Stallings, dilute those with these non intensive uses that could fairly, not easily, but they could go elsewhere in Stallings. There's nothing to prevent them from moving to a, 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 a better location in, inside of Stallings. In fact, I think this is what sort of strikes me, is you said that this owner, you couldn't tell whether he was going to actually use this. You couldn't tell whether he was going to actually use this building once it was completed and approved. So here we are making an and a massive change to our zoning. For the potential for a dance studio to go in there. And if he doesn't go in there, we've just made a a massive change to our zoning that. Isn't even going to be used. Okay, I'll be quiet now.
Yeah, I I I think David's questions were often rhetorical and I I appreciate that line of questioning. Let me give you a different perspective. And and I'll say from the start, I'm inclined to support this tonight, but I I I don't. I don't do this lightly. I wanted you to understand what I'm saying. There's a big number that. That makes a difference to me. And it's not a job number and it's not an investment. It's not a tax number. It's a. Seven hundred thousand dollar cost. Given by our own town engineer. To bring the Union West Business Park roads up to a standard whereby the town would um. Maintain them. That's the problem with Union West and then we've got Chris on the phone, Chris Platte, by the way, who is um. A a an economic developer par excellence. Chris was. Twenty seventeen, twenty sixteen, North Carolina Economic Developer of the Year. We are blessed in this town to have him. He he is an industrial recruiter and he has put together two or three business parks. With hundreds of acres. Uh, hundreds of jobs, tens of millions of investment. Uh, and as good as Chris is, and Chris is my friend, and I can say this with a smile, Chris has probably brought nothing to Union West Business Park. And it's not Chris's fault, it's our fault. And it's not really our fault, it's the park's fault. We're not talking, the economic development plan, in my opinion, was to preserve, and it states this. You, and we'll talk about it later tonight, it to preserve. Vacant land for highest and best use. There are more than fifteen acres in Union West Business Park. There's another large parcel that should be annexed into our town post haste. If we can do a voluntary annexation of another twelve. That is great land not to dilute with a dance studio. But you've also got businesses that are trying to fill their spaces with tenants. Until those roads are built. Improved. There's not a site selection consultant that Chris would work with that worth his salt that would take a his CEO or his executive committee. And say, here, come look at this site in Union West. It's just not gonna happen. The roads are pitted. They're cracking. They are failing. And and the first month I was on this job. We were approached and y'all remember this Ted Smith, the current president said, come help me fix these roads. And we said, no, absolutely not. Because number one, it's too expensive. You've got no money. Why would we put money at risk for a failing business park? And that's what this is. Let's be frank about it. There will be nobody bringing money to this business park. We talk about the hospital being a generator. It would be a great spot for medical device manufacturing. Precision manufacturing, that's the buzzword. It just, it's the opposite of dirty industrial smoke sacs. That's what that is. Distribution. Research around the hospital. All of that could go somewhere. But not in that park. Not in its current state. Until the town and Union West Business Park can pull together some sense of. Partnership on getting those roads improved or not. The best we will do. In my opinion. Is filling up existing businesses with what the market brings. The market brings. Dance studios, CrossFit facilities, baseball facilities, Taekwondo, karate, martial gymnastics. With these spaces because it makes sense. They have large open areas of space. It's called light industrial. The, in fact, I'm glad Lynn mentioned it. We didn't say this last time. This is light industrial. I was ED Director in Charlotte for many years. Light industrial is a category. Recreational uses are permitted. So I don't see this, I I think we're saying the same thing, uh, many of us, let's preserve the vacant land. And let's do something to attract and market. But unless and until Union West Business Association, Ted and his group will put some skin in the game and work with us. We're kidding ourselves that Chris is going to fill that space up with the time, the the job generators that that we hope to and aspire to. I put a note out to Alex and I'd like to discuss in the budget process, um, just. What are some incentives that we can use to get those roads improved? And I made a list of them and I'll be glad to send it to anybody who wants them, but that's a budget discussion. What should we invest in the town and get a return on investment in that park? Um, the Sun Valley Business Park, just, just one more thing. Uh, that that the Moser Group is building on Radiator Specialty Site. They announced it with great fanfare and and no disrespect, their first tenant was a self-storage facility. That's what, that's what the first tenant was, a self-storage facility. So I'll support this tonight, not because I love it. But because I want this building operator, Mr. Nichols, who I do not know, I want him to have a tenant. And I want the baseball academy to stay in place. I want the CrossFit Gym on Smith Farm Road to stay in place and and be conforming. It's not because I want to handicap our town, it's because that's what we are getting now. And in Union West Business Park in particular, we need a plan. Or it won't, it won't bring those type of jobs we aspire to. So that's my opinion.
All right, thank you, Brad. Anybody else?
Yeah, if I could.
One of the things that, um, Brad said, because I think, um. Stephen hit the nail on the head last week when he talked about the fact that, um. This whole issue before us has just kind of highlighted some of the problems in this. Location and I don't disagree, Brad, with what you're saying, but those are private roads. I don't think the owners and the um, in the park have stepped up. They don't have the skin in the game and I think the town cannot take that on. Maybe we could do some sort of partnership, but I think the reason they've got a thirty percent vacancy rate is just what you described. The park is in horrible condition. Um. I agree with you that we should try to annex that other land that would, um. And I think we need a plan and what I would like to see is for the council to, um. Ask staff to do a little deeper dive into. This whole issue of the the zoning there, the uses, uh, because I think when we, uh. Adopted the land use plan, there was a lot of effort that went into looking at the large parcels that were undeveloped. Or for redevelopment. But I don't think as much attention was given to this whole thing about industrial parks. And I mean, we ended up with an auto service district, which should be on the main drag into town. I've never agreed with that. I think we need to revisit that. I think we need to look at this business park and. Look at the uses and all there and. Take whatever measures we need and can take to support. Having, um, more the kind of industrial park there that we'd like to have and to, um. Change the uses like the auto service district and because we weren't attentive enough to those kinds of uses. We ended up with that truck repair business right on the main drag into town, which I think we all hate. Um, so I think we need to. I'm, I'm not supporting this tonight. I don't want us to adopt this text amendment because to me it's just a. Um. A way to. Contribute to the further decline of this business park. So I'm not going to support it, but I would like to see us. Uh, put some staff and and the Economic Development Committee on task to review the, um. Whole issue and see what we can do, um, to make this a better spot.
All right, thank you, Lynn, Linda, John.
Yeah, not to, uh, throw wood on the fire, but, um. Brad, I I I. Respect you immensely and I respect your opinion, uh, the the one thing I think we differ on right now is that, uh. Um, when when we're in a hole there with that business parks, we need to stop digging. And I'm okay with the existing uses, you know, the existing non-conforming uses. I don't, not saying we should kick those out or do anything like that, but. We've got no commitment from this dance studio. We've got no promise of of the owners, you know. Uh, continuing to, uh, or even trying to improve their property. Uh, and we also. Uh, we've got a dark spot on a map when it comes to all that potential there, you know. I had somebody ask me about a warehouse space in Stallings the other day. And and I went to look up Union West Park on on the internet, couldn't find anything. Uh, so when you talk about, you know, a an owner that has no skin in the game, to me, that's the ultimate no skin in the game and in today's. You know, digital age, so I I don't want to, you know, reward, you know, someone who's 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 not actively managing properties to the betterment. Uh, and I don't want to, you know, contribute to. Um, a future problem, so I I would be a no tonight.
All right, any other comments?
Did, did Isaac answer that question earlier? I mean. Is the dance studio assigned lease or? Is he gonna open or or is this the only thing stopping him from opening?
This, this was.
I'm out. That's not a land use question and is not an appropriate thing for us to be asking.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you, sir.
All right, any other questions for, uh, Lynn or the applicant that we can or any comments?
Well, wait, so I'm confused now. We're not. We're not allowed to ask if they're. Already up and running, but David and John seem to think that they're not committed and I thought that they were already.
Based on what Isaac said last week. Or last meeting, no.
Yep.
Ms. Grooms, the issue for you tonight is what are appropriate uses in that light industrial zone? Not whether or not we specifically want this business or they've got a lease now, it's. What's, what's. In that location.
Okay.
All right, any other comments? Oh, wait a minute. I'm not ready, not ready yet.
Okay.
Uh, anybody else? Yeah, I'll go ahead and give my two cents, uh, you know, I I favor this, uh, text amendment because, uh, to what Brad said. Now that the, uh, the landlord needs tenants. And he needs money to put money into those roads. So if he's at thirty percent occupancy. Uh, I hadn't run the numbers on what that would be, but, uh, he's been at thirty percent occupancy for a long time, so. You know, he needs tenants to, uh, to make improvements and that's just, you know, that's his basic business there. So I would support it, uh, you know, if, uh, but that's up to the council. So. If somebody wanted to make a motion.
Can I just ask one more question? Um, I just feel like. I have put so much thought into this and tried to see every angle and I'm so. I I know I can possibly beat a dead horse. So am I understanding correct that? Light industrial. Does include athletic. Uses.
In the county it does.
In the county it does.
For four parcels.
Well, let's, let's be clear, um.
Like other towns surrounding typically use. Light and you allow athletic. Facilities and light industrial zoning.
Yes. I'm sorry, that was not for me. Go ahead.
It's just, it's just us that doesn't, just Stallings doesn't. Classified as that?
Lynn, you know?
Ma'am, is that?
I I I know that the county's ordinance, their light industrial allows sports uses. This property zone just industrial, we have a heavy industrial district. And more of an industrial district and our current ordinance does not allow those uses. I cannot speak, I haven't done any research on Indian Trail. I do know that, um, is it the Hickory? Isaac, you mentioned that that industrial park there off of Stinson Hardest Road. I know that there's CrossFit gyms and those types of uses there, so I'm assuming. Indian Trail does allow some of these uses and those works. I don't know how those are approved, but I do know Union County's ordinance does allow it.
Yes, ma'am, Indian Trail does, and I verified that before, you know, these meetings, just just to know for sure and. Um, they do in all their zoning, their light industrial does allow, and there's currently several, several operating tenants that are in that use.
Okay.
Did that answer your question, Heather?
Yeah, I just, you know, it's such a. I don't know, I I've done so much driving around through Stallings and through Indian Trail and Matthews. And to me, what I notice is all of these athletic places are. Are mixed with these type of businesses. They seem to just go together, I guess, because of the type of building that they need. But you know, even over by McKee Corporation. There's, um. You know, industry over there, but there's also three athletic uses. Over there, um, you know, if you go in Indian Trail, it's all industry and then there's Carolina Courts and. Um, a swim place if you go. Down on Van Buren. You know, an Indian Trail. There's industry over there and then there's exercise facilities, like it just. I'm so confused because they just seem to go together. I guess because of the size building that they need, so. I don't know where else they would go. Because I've never seen them anywhere else. They're always in. A a park like that with plumbing companies and HVAC companies and. They're just, that's where they always are. So I'm, I'm just, I'm torn.
All righty, David?
You ready for a motion?
Yeah, I just want to make sure everybody's, uh. Got all their comments in.
Well, I want to make a comment just for the record, it's a thirty percent vacancy rate, not a thirty percent occupancy rate.
Yeah, that's right.
And just further declare, that was not Mr. Nichols' building, if I'm not mistaken. That was in the park entirely. So I don't think, I don't know what Mr. Nichols' building's occupancy is, but I took Lynn's. Assessment is the park has thirty percent vacancy, right Lynn?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Lynn, does that include? Unimproved lots within the park or does that include just improved lots that already have pre-existing buildings?
That was just, um, current spaces that could be rented, not vacant land.
Thank you.
All righty, any other comments, questions? All righty, uh, anybody want to make a motion?
I make a motion to deny the the request this evening. This text amendment.
All right, uh, can I get a second?
I second.
Motion by Mr. Shaw, second by Ms. Paxton, any other further comments? All right, uh, Erin, could you do a roll call, please?
For District One, Martin.
Uh, aye to deny.
District Two, Shaw.
Aye to deny.
District Three, Paxton.
Aye to deny.
District Four, Grooms.
I'm torn, but I'm gonna say nay.
District, uh, District Five airs.
Same boat, based on all the research that I've done. I'm really torn here, um, but it's also gonna be a nay for me.
And District Six, Richardson.
Nay.
Mayor, that would be three, three.
All righty, well, I'll, uh, the mayor votes, uh, no as well with Heather, Stephen and Brad, so, uh, the motion is, uh, does not pass. So, uh.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the text amendment, if that's what you need.
Yes, that's what I need. So motion by Mr. Richardson to approve the text amendment twenty one dot oh one dot oh one. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Grooms. And Erin, could you do a roll call, please?
Yes, sir, District One, Martin.
Nay.
District Two, Shaw.
No.
District Three, Paxton.
Nay.
District Four, Grooms.
Aye.
District Five, Ayers.
Aye.
District Six, Richardson.
Aye.
And Mayor, that is again three, three.
All right, and and I vote, uh, yes to support the motion. Or the motion to approve the text amendment passes, so. So now we have to go into the statement of consistency and reasonableness. Uh, so the request is to amend eight point one table of uses and make the following uses. Uh, quotation marks L in the industrial district, sports academy, dance school, academy, gymnastics, cheerleading academy, and personal training facility. So I'll read the statement of consistency and reasonableness, if I can get it on my phone here. The towns, the Stallings Town Council hereby finds that the proposed text amendments are consistent with the two thousand seventeen Stallings Comprehensive Land Use Plan adopted November twenty-seven, two thousand seventeen, based on consistency with goals and objectives set forth in the document establishing the inclusion of commercial uses in the town and to ensure opportunities for business to locate within the town limits. At the February twenty-two, two thousand twenty-one meeting, the Stallings Town Council voted to recommend, Stallings Town Council voted to recommend approval of the proposed. Uh, is that the town uh planning board?
I think the date's just wrong.
Yeah, so at at their March eighth, two thousand twenty-one meeting, the Stallings Town Council voted to recommend approval of the proposed amendment and stated that the town council finds and determines that the text amendments are consistent with the key guiding principles, goals, and objectives of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, and hereby recommends its approval. This statement and motion was seconded and passed. So uh, can I get a motion to approve the statement of reasonable consistency and reasonableness?
Uh, sure, I'll move approval.
So that would be Stephen, Brad, or?
That was Brad.
Man, you keep insulting Brad. He's not gonna take that much longer.
The the mayor frees up again? I think the mayor froze.
Yep. Mayor, do you want to move forward with the vote?
Well, go ahead. We need a second to the motion, though.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Richardson, a second by Ms. Grooms. Erin will need a roll call vote on this.
Thank you, Linda.
Okay, there you go.
Um, District One, Martin.
Aye.
District Two, Shaw.
No.
District Three, Paxton.
Nay.
District Four, Grooms.
Aye.
District Five, Ayers.
Aye.
District Six, Richardson.
Nay.
Mayor, that's four, two.
All right, thank you. So the statement of reasonable consistency and reasonableness passes. So all righty. Thank you, council. So we'll move on to number six. Uh, the conditional zoning twenty dot oh one dot oh one, the Charlotte Medical Hospital Authority that we tabled from February twenty-second meeting. So uh.
Mayor, thank you and everyone else for your time and feedback.
Thank you, Isaac. All right, I'll turn the meeting over to Lynn.
Um, yes, if you all recall, we held the public hearing for a request that was made by Atrium um concerning the rezoning of a piece of property located across the street from the hospital site. Um, they are looking to build a roundabout as the main entrance into their project off of Stallings Road. Um, and in doing so, um, they are impacting EZ Smith Towing Service. So they are going to have to acquire some of his property from, and in exchange for that property. Um, whoops, sorry about that. Um, the applicant is asking, they are going to basically exchange some property um with Mr. Smith. Um, the property that they're looking to have rezoned is highlighted there in black, just outlined. Um, the property is gonna have to be conditionally zoned to allow Mr. Smith to use it as a towing service due to the fact that the um, that is not a allowed use in the MU two district. Like I said, the public hearing was held last month. Um, I don't believe there's anyone present at that meeting to speak. There is a list of conditions presented by staff that were recommended by the planning board. Um, and I, those are in front of you for reference. If you have any questions about the request, I'll be happy to answer those.
Man, did I understand you to say that this is not an allowed use in that district, but it is a use that has been there previously, correct?
That is, yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. It's a grandfathered use in MU two. In the parcel that we're looking at rezoning, it's it's a conditional zoning. And it will only be applied to the point six-three acres that's being added to the project. Um, the overall towing service is not being rezoned, so it will remain a non-conforming, legally non-conforming use.
And would it be your expectation that if this were not to be allowed, that the um hospital would not be able to acquire the land they need for the roundabout?
Um, it's my understanding that it would impact that ability. Yes, ma'am.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
I agree. All right. Thank you, Lynn. Any questions for Lynn? And uh, I'm I'm sure we don't, do we have anybody from the applicants here? Lynn?
I don't believe there's anyone here from the hospital this evening.
All right.
Lynn, quick clarification on the recommended conditions. I see you highlighted disallowing the use of chain link fire, chain link wire and uh the razor wire. Uh, is that gonna be applicable to the entire property or just the conditional zoning piece uh section of the property?
Um, it would only apply to the conditionally zoned parcel.
Yeah.
All righty. Any more questions? All right, can I get a motion, please?
I'll make the motion to approve of conditional zoning two oh dash oh one dash oh one, the Charlotte Meckenberg Housing Authority with the prescribed conditions.
I'll second that.
All right, motion by Ms. Paxton, second by Mr. Martin. Any further discussion?
Hey, hey, one one question. Is that the correct? Um, just for paperwork purposes, is it CZ twenty oh one oh one? I was just, I was surprised to see that was CD CZ twenty. I would have thought that it was CZ twenty-one. Okay.
Yeah, it was submitted in December. That's why we twenty number.
Okay, I just wanted to validate that. Thank you.
Yeah, no, I appreciate you asking.
All right, we have a motion and a second uh to uh to approve the conditional zoning application. So Erin, could you do a roll call, please?
District One, Martin.
Aye.
District Two, Shaw.
Aye.
District Three, Paxton.
Aye.
District Four, Grooms.
Aye.
District Five, Ayers.
Aye.
District Six, Richardson.
Aye.
All right, the motion uh to approve the conditional zoning is is passed unanimously. So I'll read the statement of consistency and reasonableness into the record. The Stallings count, uh, the request was conditionally zone six point, uh, point six-two-nine-five acres of land located in PIDs zero seven one zero two one three two C and zero seven one zero two zero eight two eight two to be used for parking and storage as part of an existing adjacent towing service. The statement of consistent and reasonableness, the Stallings Town Council hereby finds that the proposed conditional zoning is consistent, is consistent with the two thousand seventeen Stallings Comprehensive Land Use Plan adopted twenty, November twenty-seven, two thousand seventeen, based on consistency with goals and objectives set forth in the document of promoting consistent development patterns. At their March eighth, two thousand twenty-one meeting, the Stallings Town Council voted to recommend approval of the proposed amendment and stated its town council finds and determines that the conditional zoning is consistent with the key guiding principles, goals, and objectives of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, and hereby recommends its approval. So can I get a motion and a second on that?
I'll move to approve the statement of reasonableness and consistency.
All right. Motion by Ms. Paxton, second by.
I'll second.
Uh, Mr. Ayers, Erin, could you do a roll call, please?
District One, Martin.
Aye.
District Two, Shaw.
Aye.
District Three, Paxton.
Aye.
District Four, Grooms.
Aye.
District Five, Ayers.
Aye.
District Six, Richardson.
Aye.
All right, motion passes unanimously. Thank y'all, council. All right, we'll move to the number seven, the Economic Development Strategic Plan Draft. And Alex, Brad, and David?
Sure. Glad to lead off here, Mayor. Thank you. And that invite Councilmember Richardson and Councilmember Shaw um to add in anything they need, as well as Mr. Plata, who I see on the line too. Welcome, Chris. So let me pull it up here real quick.
Chris, I did have that right. You were NC Economic Developer of the Year at one point last several, weren't you?
Yes, sir. I was fortunate enough to be voted on by my peers to be that. It was two thousand sixteen, I think.
Awesome.
Yeah.
All right.
You were in Union County when you you got that award?
Yes, sir.
All righty.
Top uh, top BS guy of the state, so.
Somebody's gotta do it.
Both uh, both Trevor Lawrence and Chris Plata are Clemson grads who are very humble. All right, so yeah, economic development plan here. Um, so you're a call, we we talked about it last time, presented it to the board and got feedback. Our ED work team, uh, which is Councilmember Richardson, Councilmember Shaw, myself, uh, Mr. Plata, Ms. Nichols and Ms. Hare, uh, kind of met and evaluated the comments and um, thought they were good ones. And uh, we uh, we incorporated Mayor, uh, your concerns uh here. Tried to soften up that language a little bit to show that the town is still in in good fiscal health right now. Um, and really, that was the big one. There were a couple very small substantive typos that we caught. We corrected those. But um, really, it seems like all the feedback and the comments have been incorporated and uh, it's ready for your consideration.
All righty. Brad or David, you have any summary comments?
I'm summarized out.
The only other comment I'd make is we did talk about who gets this, when and how. Uh, and it is posted on the social media site for the town. I think several of you posted it on your own pages. We also had a discussion about should we uh do a one-page version for you CEOs, business owners, one page, maybe a little different flavor for citizens. Um, just, that that's not necessarily germane to being approved tonight, but we are sensitive that it reads to the right audience well. Um, so I'll make that comment and that's more to come on that. It doesn't withhold anything tonight.
All right. Any other further comments from council? Can I get a motion in on this, on the economic development draft?
I'll make a motion to approve the Economic Development Strategy Plan.
All right, motion by Mr. Ayers. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Paxton. And Erin, could you read the, do the roll call, please?
District One, Martin.
Aye.
District Two, Shaw.
Aye.
District Three, Paxton.
Aye.
District Four, Grooms.
Aye.
District Five, Ayers.
Aye.
District Six, Richardson.
Aye.
All right, the motion passes unanimously. And uh, thank you to Brad, David, Chris, Plata, and Alex and your staff on working on this. Thank y'all. All right.
And I didn't know Chris, fellow Clemson grad, so.
Go Tiger.
That's right.
Now, if I can say one thing, Mayor, I I just want to appreciate all the work of everybody's staff and and council members that were a part of this and all the comments. And honestly, for us, this is a great step forward and a good roadmap to guide our office and how we can help the town. So uh, it gives us a clear, a clear path going forward. So thank you all.
All right. Next up is number eight, the Union County Board of Commissioners, March eleventh, Infrastructure Workshop. So Alex wrote a nice summary there for us.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, sir. So um, on the uh, on the eleventh, uh, which is coming up on this Thursday, we've got uh, our meeting with the county commissioners, as do all the other towns, where they've invited us for a uh, growth and infrastructure workshop. Um, and the the location has changed. So for those of you interested in coming, it's at the, this address right here. I've highlighted it here and it's no longer at the uh, the Ag Center. So uh, please don't come to the Ag Center. Um, so uh, we've got, they're allocating us fifteen minutes to give a presentation uh, on related issues with the town. So we talked about that a little bit last time, and I tried to synthesize uh, the um, the framework of what was discussed here. So uh, I think it would be helpful, as always, to kind of maintain a positive um, approach to things. So uh, just being positive, working together. Sorry about that. I don't know, let's not get out of here. Um, so beginning, Mayor, just welcome. Thank you. Kind of lead us off here. And then uh, having uh, staff, most likely Lynn, on several of these, just relay some of the growth pressures we're facing. A very, very general and broad overview of the projects that we've got in the pipeline, maybe just showing a map. And hey, these are some of the things. These are the acreage numbers of things going on. Uh, sharing that the council uh was concerned about residential densities. Uh, and so they made the uh higher density residential uses in town, multi-family town, so they're no longer by right. And that sharing that the council is in the process of finalizing and now has finalized an economic development strategic plan with the goal of creating a downtown area and increasing commercial development to achieve a more ideal commercial residential tax base. Um, and then Mayor Dunn or or staff, whatever you prefer, Mayor, can kind of summarize that kind of line of thinking there and that we need adequate water and sewer uh, to support economic development initiatives through increasing commercial development. Uh, including one example is that area around the hospital. And then uh, Councilmember Martin uh would share the the need for the county to support proper planning uh for schools uh for municipalities that's limited, it's ineffective. So encouraging the commissioners to support adequate funding and planning for schools. And then just a final wrap up. So we've only got fifteen minutes. We may need to synthesize some of that. But that's the kind of general concept in synthesizing y'all's comments, trying to stay positive, um, build and work that relationship with the county while also highlighting our concerns. So um, what do y'all think?
Looks great to me. And I just want to remind you, you know, the first slide uh that we put up that says, welcome, we're in town of Stallings. I wanted to make sure, can we have the hospital there, there uh, there uh, what do you call, their drawing of it, their finished product looking, so we can uh hit everybody with that. And then, and if we have a great picture of our town park, use that as a background on one of the slides.
You know, it's a three million. Or even standalone slides.
Yeah, it's a three million dollar investment to make sure everybody, we get, let everybody, remind everybody of our award-winning park.
Alex, do you know what time of day Stallings will get to present?
Thank you for asking. Twelve forty-five. I believe is our time slot.
So right when the trip the fans are kicking in.
What? What?
Turkey drugs.
That's funny. That's that's across the street.
All right, any questions for Alex on that?
Everybody's good for that. Could I get a a quick uh, quick count of the folks that are planning to be there in person, I believe? Mayor Dunn, Councilmember Martin, I recall y'all saying y'all would probably be there in person. Is that, is that correct?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm a game day decision. Unfortunately, I just, I can't commit to game day decision.
Sure, sounds good.
Well, me too. And you said you would send us the Zoom link so that we could do it um virtually, if we can't be there in person.
Well, I'll send the Zoom link. I was told that, you know, there. Well, I'll send the, uh, Zoom link, I was told that, you know, there'd be an opportunity to participate virtually, so I'm assuming, or at least. You would virtually, so, we'll confirm it, if that's not the case, I'll let you know.
Alrighty. That brings us to the end, so can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Shaw, second by.
I need, I need to stall for six minutes, I'm, I was the over.
I'm under.
Second by Mr. Martin, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Alright, as have it, thank y'all for your work.
Night off.
See y'all, bye. Hey Wyatt.
Yeah.
Did you notice my, my gas lights are bright now?
Your what light, oh no, I didn't, I hadn't been by there at night, went to get a letter?
No, 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 I just got around to finally fixing them.
No, I thought maybe you got a letter from the, from Bay, right, Brazil.
No, they were still on, they, they still counted as on, but, uh.
No.
I finally got around to, I mean, I had the dumb mantles for who knows how long, but.
Well, I'll make a point.
It is so bright.
Well, how long do they, I don't, do they stay on all night?
Yeah, they're gassed.
No.
They're, they're on all night, night and day, so yeah.
Well, your bedroom's on the backside of your house, isn't it?
No, it's on the front.
No.
I even, I got up in the middle of the night last night just to look, I'm like, dang, come on, what is that bright light out there? I might, I might turn the, um, the gas down just a smidge, so it's not burning full blast.
There you go.
There you go, have a good one.
You too, see ya.
Y'all, bye.